What's going on y'all? Seaford Junction, it's your boy Sherman. I'm here with a very special guest today. Today, we have a political interview going on. Today, we have Uganda Sample Jones. In the building and she is running for a, uh, what is the position again?
City Council.
City Council.
District.
South district, okay. And for those who don't know, can you just, we spoke about prior to the interview, but can you just break down? What exactly a city council member does and how many districts we have as far as the north, south?
Absolutely. So, thank you so much for having me on today.
Absolutely.
Uh, City Council in Newport News. So, our government in Newport News is set up a little bit different than our neighboring cities. We have three different districts. So, we have the north, central, and south.
Okay.
Uh, I am running for City Council in the south district, which is from J. Clymore's down to the waterfront. It's one of the largest districts. We have about twenty precincts. Whereas, we have our central district and then also the north district. Uh, right now, we have two people that are running in the north, three in the central, and two in the south. And then four people that are running for mayor, which is everyone.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, um, so I actually, uh, did an interview with Philip. So, he's running for mayor, yeah.
Yes.
So, it's interesting just seeing all the different local political positions that there are because, um, prior to this year, honestly, I wasn't really privy to how much, uh, city politics there are. You know, as far as like, you know, the delegates, the city council, the, the mayor, you know, all, all of these positions. And you've got obviously the congressional level and stuff like that. So, excuse me, um, when it comes to city council, can you just explain? What some of the duties of a city council member are?
Absolutely. So, your city council member is a a advocate for your values. They're the person that's supposed to be the vessel of what you want in your city and be able to translate that to local government. To pass their policy and legislation that impacts your community directly. They're also supposed to be the ser- in the, in this, the city charter, it says a ceremonial person. So, that means you show up at different spaces, you wave, and you say hi, but we're gonna bring some different flavor to city council with me on air.
Okay, trying to make it more personable, I'm assuming?
Absolutely. And not only personable, but knowing what the organization has going on. And that takes being a part of the work that they do. So, instead of me showing up and taking a picture, I'm actually gonna attend your meetings to see what you have going on and how we could connect the dots in local government to support your word.
Hmm, okay, interesting. Okay, yeah, I didn't know that. So, that's, that's good to know. Um, now, people, um, always are a little confused as far as like some of these local positions are concerned. So, when it comes to, you know, the local positions, how rooted in political affiliations are they? As far as like bipartisan and things like that, like, is it, is it like, hey, I'm running for city council, I'm Republican? Or how I'm running for city council, I'm Democratic? Like, how does that whole distinction work if it exists at all?
Well, it's not supposed to exist. The local elections are, are nonpartisan. So, you're not supposed to claim any party. However, we know that the Democrats have their picks, the Republicans have their picks. I'm someone who speaks to the issues. So, I don't care what color or side you are. I'm speaking to the issues that are impacting our community.
Okay, gotcha. And then, speaking of the issues, can we just kind of go into a little bit of those issues that maybe people that aren't necessarily involved in local politics? Aren't privy to, um, so I know, obviously, we were talking prior to the interview about, uh, how we're third or fourth, or third and fourth in, uh, the lowest rankings in the state, correct?
Yes.
For education?
That's for education. When we're talking about the lack of, or loss of learning during COVID, we rank the lowest in our state. So, that means we have a lot of work to do. In Newport News, this election is gonna change the dynamics of our city council for at least eight years. So, we need to make sure that we're electing the people who have our values and heart. So, um, so, one of the points, my focus on my platform is communication. And that heals a lot of the misinformation that we get in our city, our lack of information.
Right.
I would, I plan to continue the town hall meetings that our former, well, Vice Mayor Cherry currently has. She has Your Voice Matters, and it happens at Midtown in Delano Grove. I'm gonna continue that because it is a safe space where small businesses, residents can come and share their experiences in Newport News and connect with resources. But I'm going to do it a little bit different. We're gonna take it to the people and meet the people where they are. So, that means developing a relationship with the housing authorities so we can hold these town hall me- meetings in Marshall Court's or in the Aqueduct. So, we can inform the residents there, meet them where they are, provide them with a meal, and give them some information on what the city is doing and what we're doing to help them.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's really, really good information. Now, how much influence? And, and, hold on, before I get to that, you said, so the city council positions are for eight years that you hold the seat?
It's actually four years.
Four.
But you have to think, the first, uh, your first time elected, your first term is mostly learning job. Like, a couple of years, you take learning job, doing, you know, this ceremonial thing, it's kind of going with the flow, seeing how you can infiltrate. The second year is when you really, or the second term is when you really get your work done. The benefit of having me as city councilwoman is that I know the job. I prepared myself for this. I have read the city charter. I have attended our Economic Development Authority meetings in Newport News. And that is important because legally, a city cannot buy or sell land, but they do it through an authority. So, if you wanna know how the money is going and flowing in our city, you have to attend this meeting. And this is a meeting that is open to the public, but a lot of people don't know about it. So, one benefit of having me as your city councilwoman is that I have done the work. So, if you come to me and say, I want more education on small businesses, I know who to direct you to, what department to send you to, so you can get those resources. And that's what we need, a working council. Someone that knows the system in order to infiltrate it and change it.
Gotcha, okay. And then, are there term limits? I know you said, you know, eight years and either in four-year terms. So, is it a two-year or two-term limit, excuse me?
No, there's not. It's for myself, I'm not gonna be a career politician. I wanna get in there and show people how to get it done right and then uplift the next lead leader. Because I'm getting older and I'm not always gonna be innovative and on and popping. We have to bring in younger people and we have to equip them with just knowing how to maneuver through this so we can keep our voice, the people's voice, in the forefront.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's very important because a lot of people, um, look at politics and, you know, you see like the senate, the house, and you have these career politicians that are there. There's no term limits, so they're just constantly reelected because people just aren't involved in politics, they just don't care.
And they're comfortable with the name.
Correct, exactly. They're familiar with the name and then they're just like, okay, well, they've been here for twenty years, so I'll just reelect them. So, these, these things, a lot of young people don't care about, but now, I feel like a lot of young people are starting to be more involved in politics, starting to pay attention more. And I feel like as we progress as a society, whether it be at a local level or a, uh, state level or a national level, we need to look at things to put people in power that are younger because they have fresh new ideas, they're not set in the old ways. They know how to be progressive and ideally move society forward in a, a good direction.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, that's good that you're willing to impart that, that wisdom and knowledge onto somebody younger than you.
Absolutely, cuz we need those bridges. We need people that are just not stagnant in where they are, but is willing to bring someone up. Because, yeah, we need the innovation, we need the new ideas, but we also need to be grounded in preserving our history and knowing where we have been. Because my platform now in two thousand twenty-two is the same as Ms. Jessie Ratley's in the early eighties. She was talking about people are coming to get our waterfront in Newport News. Hold on to your houses, start your businesses. It's the same thing that I'm talking about to this day, and we see it come to fruition with all the revitalization that's happening downtown. We need ownership in that, and that comes with education. It comes with learning how to grow your business and connect with contracts to be able to do business with the city. So, that's what I bring to council.
Hmm, yeah, that's very powerful because a lot of people, like you said, uh, we just don't know. You know, and especially when it comes to, like you said, downtown's getting built up, like, I, I went down there a month ago, I wanna say, I drove through there and I was like, this doesn't even look like downtown Newport News anymore. Like, they're completely changing it and all that stuff. But, you know, obviously, with that comes some negativity as well. Like, as far as, you know, taking the older houses, breaking them down, building things up, essentially gentrification. So, I know that you mentioned affordable housing as one of your, you know, uh, your candidential points. I don't know if I even worded that properly, but one of your points for your run.
Yeah.
Um, was affordable housing. So, as a council member, how can you ensure that housing is, one, kept affordable? And two, provided to, uh, the, the local residents, uh, after they're, you know, I guess ultimately pushed out? Cuz I mean, in an ideal world, you would say, okay, we're gonna reposition you in the meantime, we're gonna tear down this community, build it back up better, not raise the, the prices on it, and then put you back there. So, that way, one, you're increasing the co- the quality of life. You're slowly cut, rising the cost of living, but you're also allowing opportunities for the people to live there, to get that, that piece of the pie essentially, in an ideal world, of course, but.
Exactly. And what you just explained is a choice neighborhood initiative. We got a thirty million dollar grant from HUD, and it was actually under Ben Carson's, um, resume, his system in the housing. But we got that money because the people had to be at the table. And because I was the youngest and most vocal person to show up, I was asked to be the liaison. So, I've been a part of that project since two thousand and sixteen, and we addressed just that. We did relocate families from really circle, and now really circles torn down. It's gonna be replaced with mixed income housing. So, our job is to make sure that the people, while they're relocated, we're making sure that we're feeding our knowledge into them, telling them that Section Eight is not self-sufficiency because you still have to report to somebody every year.
Right.
We want you to use that Section Eight voucher and turn it into home ownership. A lot of people don't know that they can do that. There's so many programs that the city offers, the state offers, public business offers for first-time home buyers that you can layer that help and assistance. People don't even know how to start. So, I found a really good organization, and there's a lot, there's quite a few out here that help with home ownership. But it's not a bank, it's not with the system, it's not with housing, it's someone who, he actually cares about people cuz he lived from apartment to apartment, rent to rent. Now, he helps people connect with grants. They have a ten thousand dollar grant right now that helps with down payments on a house. But people don't know about it. You know, so gentrification is a thing, and people will make you feel negative. I say you're negative if you bring it up. It's happening. When we look at our tax assessments downtown Newport News, they were twenty-eight percent higher this year. For the last three years, they've been in the double digits. But when you move up, about twenty miles up Newport News, the tax assessment was seven to nine percent. So, it shows.
That's insane.
Yeah, the system is working in its favor of gentrification.
Right.
What we have to do is be a voice and making sure that the people understand how to infiltrate that system and change it. That means, cuz there's so many different levels to affordable housing. First, we have to pressure the city manager to make sure that she's looking at innovative ideas, that, to make sure that we don't have to vote on a twenty-eight percent tax incre- increase on your house. Look at the Brookings Institute. There are so many studies out here that show that we can get money from different avenues, revenues, instead of taxing the people and putting the burden of the revitalization on them. Secondly, we have to make sure that we put money into our workforce development. We need to make sure that our residents are equipped with the education to get higher-paying jobs, so in turn, the rent will be affordable to them.
Right.
Right now, if you're not working, or you're just working, you know, at a mediocre job, you're not getting paid a lot, of course, any rent out here right now isn't gonna be affordable.
Yeah.
So, let's equip our residents with the access to do better in their lives. Like I told you about the Brooks Crossing Program, four hundred dollars a week to get training, workforce development. You can talk how to build a resume, have a soft interview skills.
That's unheard of.
You know, and it's.
That's, that's, that's crazy.
What happens at that building is amazing, but the community doesn't know about it.
Yeah.
So, it is so many great programs that not just the navigating wealth program, we have home ownership programs, financial literacy. I love that we have intergenerational programs as well because we have a lot of elders and returning citizens that don't have computer skills. But we have high schoolers that are teaching them how to use the computer.
Yeah.
How to use Windows and different things like that. But it's sad that our city doesn't know about it, and I feel like it's a direct reflection on our leadership. When I'm on council, you know, at the end of the night, when they say, oh, happy birthday to this one and that, no. Talk to me about some programs that's gonna change my children's life. Talk to me about something that's gonna create a access to generational wealth. Talk about the tech program, the tech center that's coming up here and how it's gonna bring innovation from across the nation. How can we tie that to the shipyard and make these big businesses leverage being here?
What tech center are you, are you referencing?
So, W M Jordan.
Okay.
He's the contractor that gets a lot of contracts. We have to work on that too cuz access avail- opportunity needs to be available to everyone.
Right.
But the tech center is coming, say, do you know where, um, oh goodness, it's up here. I was just there with Starbucks. Whole Foods.
Oh, Whole Foods, okay.
That shopping center is considered a tech center.
Right.
You know where One Life Fitness is? So, back there, if you take that road all the way back, it's a whole development project.
Yeah, okay, I saw that. Yeah, I didn't know what that was. So, so they're building a tech center back there?
Yes, it's gonna be about six or seven buildings.
Wow.
And it's gonna, right now, we have a, a, a business over there that makes the, the IV twos for infants.
Yeah, I saw that, okay.
Innovative. They don't do that anywhere in the United States, and it's right here in Newport News. Why aren't we celebrating that? Why don't we have field trips for our children going there to see, hey, this is something that I can do? And then, how do we be a bridge with the innovation and the technology that's coming there from Virginia Tech? Cuz they're up there too, and connect it with the work that Old Dominion University is doing downtown.
Right.
Or with the work that C N U is doing. So, we need our city leaders to be the bridges and all of the things that's going on in Newport News. So, that's why my first point, communication is so important.
Right.
Because we have people who do some phenomenal work across the city, but no one knows cuz they're working in their own silos. I will be that bridge.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, that's, yeah, you've, I mean, you've already been a wealth of knowledge in the, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes that we've been talking already. Like, I, I've learned stuff that I didn't know, and I've seen projects coming down the pipe that I didn't even know were happening. Like I said, I saw that construction, but I had literally no idea what it was. I was probably just building an extension to Jefferson Lab or something. I don't know.
And Jefferson Lab's gonna be there too. But if you hear a lot of discussion around the Scott Center, uh, when they talk about the Scott Center, a lot of people thought it was downtown, but it's actually a bus depot that's up here. And how the money is flowing and the city's about to put millions of dollars into a garage for this tech center. So, if we're gonna provide that to a contractor, developer, why aren't we leveraging him and say, okay, sir, we're doing this for you, but can we get some money to fund this after-school program? Or can we get some, a free space to be able to run this summer program? That's how you make the businesses in Newport News work for the people.
Hmm, okay, interesting. Now, and we talked about the, uh, the budgeting and the flow of money and things like that. Now, is the flow of money or the budget, is that isolated to, uh, certain districts? Like, is, is the north district have its own budget, or is it a whole city budget for Newport News and it's divvied amongst the three?
In fact, so it's a whole budget for the city.
Okay.
And Newport News is a billion-dollar incorporated city. We are a business, and it's gonna operate as a business. What we need is people that can, again, be the bridge. I keep saying it, be the bridge.
Yeah.
That can say, okay, well, we have the city budget. When we go through that, that session where we have community come in and people, residents come in and talk about what they want on that budget, we need to make that be louder about, hey, come in. Have it flashing on TV everywhere. We're going over our budget. Let's make it a whole citywide event. What do you wanna see in your neighborhood? But we don't do those things. And because we're so quiet, our people do not know, government is allowed to get away with a lot of stuff. So, we need to have that communication so we can bring transparency and accountability.
Okay, perfect. Now, um, when it comes to making these decisions as far as how the budget's gonna be spent, where the money's gonna go, what programs should be funded, obviously, I would imagine that the city council has to come to a mutual agreement amongst the six individuals, correct?
Yeah.
So, um, have you sat in on like city council meetings and seen how that whole debate hashes out, or if it's even a debate?
At where I'm allowed to, yes. Right now, our work sessions aren't televised. So, those discussions where a city council hashes out a lot of the issues, we don't even see it unless you show up at this, this, um, the work session meeting.
Gotcha.
It's three o'clock during the day. If you're.
Most people at work, yeah.
Exactly. So, one of my goals is to get communication. Put that work session on TV so people can really get engaged. Then also have a, a way where people can send their questions in, whether it's through an email or on a Zoom. But that's how you bring more ideas in to make sure that we're moving Newport News in the future for everyone.
So, question, do they have a social media page, like a Facebook page or anything like that? So, is it possible to livestream the meetings? I mean, I know a lot of people are, like, TV at this day and age, cable is kind of antiquated. Or it's becoming that way. So, you have to kind of appeal to the youth and what majority of people are consuming content on, which is like Facebook, Instagram, things like that. So, um, is that a viable option?
It is.
Okay.
But, I'm gonna say bad, we have a older crop, crop, does that make sense? Our directors in Newport News are older. And I remember Ms. Cleida, I love her to pieces, but we almost had a fight with her to get a Facebook page. And this might have been like five or six years ago. Our Facebook is obsolete now. So, we need people like you. All this technology that you have, you know how to operate some stuff and communication.
Right.
Why aren't we so contracting you to come in and help us get the word out on different things?
Yeah.
I talked to, um, wrote a lot. We need to use her in communication. She likes running her mouth. We just need to make sure she gets the right information out there.
I gotcha.
You know, so utilize the people that already have the skills and the passion to do this work and support them. Encourage them to come into the city. Teach them how to become a vendor and get a check to do for what they love doing. And then also, you're feeding the need in our community. Because people aren't gonna always look at the city stuff. It's got to a point that I stopped looking at the news. I get my information through social media sometimes. I'm just tired of the gravity of everything. You look on the news and it's a shooting and this and that and that.
Yeah.
So, it's people, you have your network. You can get information out to them better than I can, and you can speak the language. So, I'm all about empowering us to be the changers that we want to be. Whether it's your, your contracted, subcontracted with our departments, or you're sitting and serving on a board or a commission. I serve on a board of zoning appeals where we protect our waterways. I didn't know anything about boards or commissions until I was like thirty-six. And then I was like, what? I gotta say so when, and how things roll in my city? Then I started telling everybody, y'all better go fill out a board bank application, get on the board of some type of board.
Yeah.
C S B, I remember I tried to get on a community service board, um, on their board that they have. I wasn't allowed to because people felt like I wasn't ready. But what they didn't know was that I have a cousin that's out here right now stuck, she's on heroin. And we live there every day. We have our children, you know, we, we, we go to times that we don't know where she's at. We worry, we put her in rehab and things like this. So, I have a different perspective that would have added value to that board. But because of people's perspective of me or, or pers- how they view me, they felt like, oh, she's not ready. So, we need to be able to empower us with the education and the information on how to get people on these boards, how to get real-life experiences driving the decision-making table around our city.
Hmm, that's powerful, okay. Yeah, that's, that's definitely interesting to think about, um, cuz I didn't know about that either, where you can actually control what goes. I mean, I obviously know about like the city council meetings and then the, the happenings of the higher-ups in the city, if you will, how they meet and things just happen. Um, but some people just don't know where to go, or they don't know when it happens, or both, you know, or they just don't know it exists at all. So, um, as a city council member, or just in general, um, what's your, uh, approach, I guess, on increasing awareness on what's going on, uh, and providing that information to people so that they can go to these meetings? And, uh, even if it's a matter of shifting the time of the meeting so that, you know, it's more accommodable or more accommodating for people, excuse me? Or even just introducing last year, I mean, like, is it that, like, a contracting thing? Or like, how does, how does that whole, how's your whole approach on that?
So, I shared two of them. One is the town hall meetings and continue those going, so we have a safe space in person. The second is making sure at the end of the meeting, I'm sharing real information, not happy birthday and all those wonderful things.
Right.
That could be on social media somewhere, you know, I give you a shout out. But then also, we have to, um, just be places. The same way that I'm out here campaigning is the same way that I wanna come to you and say, Sherman, this is going on. You know, so I hate how when election time comes, you see the commercials, people come into your door, everybody's nice and sweet. But then a couple of weeks later, they gone. They won't answer your phone call. You know, they look at you crazy if you try to bring up a concern. So, one thing I could say is that me, my morals, I'm not even like that. I'm gonna be around. I go door to door anyway with my business. I want to hear the concerns of the residents and the people that I serve because that, that makes me a better city councilwoman. Because I'm armed with the concerns of my people. And then if you come to me and say, hey, this is going on, and I have pushback on this side, I could say, Sherman, they acting up. You better come down here and speak your truth. Cuz they not listening to me. It's not about me. I'll give you a story. So, our city council tried to, um, vote on an ordinance that would increase taxi cabs from two seventy-five to the initial cost to get in, from two seventy-five to five dollars. That impacts our community because in the east end of Newport News, we're in a food desert. We have people who will take the, well, it actually takes three buses, two to three buses to get out to Walmart or Pickle Wiggly. But when you get to Pickle Wiggly, it's price gouging, the fresh fruit isn't so fresh, you know, so you might as well just go head up to Walmart.
Isn't Pickle Wiggly supposed to be like the affordable option? Funny how that works.
You're not gonna get me on trouble, get me in trouble.
I mean, it's just, it's just kind of backwards. How, you know, downtown Newport News, the most impoverished part of Newport News is, one, suffering from a high, exorbitantly high tax rates, and they're also getting gouged at the local affordable food market. So, that's, that's interesting how that works, but.
And also, what, well, I worked with the food bank and we did some research studying. And we also found that most of our residents, if you live out the creek or somewhere that takes you two or three buses to get out to anywhere, then you're getting your food from Family Dollar, from Dollar General, places that we know don't have fresh food.
Right.
Vienna sausages, things like that, that's not healthy. So, that's another system that's, that's invading our, our community. That's why I started our community garden. We have a community garden on twenty-first, twenty-first and Jefferson. And I was able to work with the young lady who created her nonprofit, Hamper Rose Urban Agriculture, and now it's grown. It's a partnership with the faith-based community, and we're coming together to provide fresh fruits and vegetables to our community. That's a way to balance these things because everything isn't gonna be on our side. Everything isn't gonna be for the people. But we need people that can bring in partnerships and collaborations that can balance what's happening.
Gotcha, okay. Now, being a grassroots candidate, um, how do you feel like that gives you an edge over some of the other candidates that, you know, aren't maybe from Newport News?
Well, I believe most of the candidates are from Newport News, but I am grassroots. And it gives me an edge because I know what I'm talking about. I know how the government and systems and policies affect the people. I myself, my, my nephew was fifteen years old and he was murdered. I understand that when I went to our school board and asked, why was a sixteen-year-old that shot my nephew able to walk off the football field and the coaches knew he had a gun? How come he didn't go to a mentoring program? Instead, eleven o'clock that night, my nephew was shot and killed out here at his forest. So, what I bring is I know how it impacts our community. And we can bring a real conversation on how to connect these dots to heal everyone, not just the few elite.
Right, yeah. The goal should be the majority, not the, you know, rich and, and, you know, entitled minority. Um, so, okay, gotcha. Now, voting, uh, obviously, we had, you know, early voting, uh, that's closed. Now, the actual official, uh, open poll date is November eighth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, um, for those who don't know, where can they go to vote?
Uh, you can look at vote.org, V O T E dot org, and it will show you your local poll, polling places. Um, you can also go to the, or call the registrar's office, and should, they'll let you know where you vote. Um, cuz November eighth is gonna be at your actual precinct. So, I believe this area is Watkins Elementary. And then we have like Saunders and different places that you vote.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll put some links, uh, in the description as well, so that way people can just, you know, if they just don't feel like typing it or looking it up, they can just click on it and, and then just be there, just to make it easier and, you know, a seamless transition.
And one thing that's, um, different this year is if you're not registered to vote, you can actually register to vote at the poll this year, as long as you bring in your Virginia ID, your ID showing where you live, your proof of residency. You can register and then cast a provisional ballot that will be counted after the election.
Hmm, so when you say counted after the election, so that means they count all the polls up?
Yes.
And then, after the final results are out, they'll then factor in the prevention, uh, what'd you say, the provi-
Provision.
Provisional, okay, sorry, the provisional votes?
Yes, exactly.
Huh.
So, you know how it works.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little, cuz like, so they don't release the final results until they include the provisional votes?
Exactly.
Okay, gotcha.
And then it's like finalized.
Yeah, I was about to say, you know, that's kinda like, like, what if, what if it's like a significant difference in the provisional votes and then it skews the results and now. Who you thought was supposed to win, didn't, you know, that that'd be interesting, but.
And in Newport News, we've had over fifty thousand residents already voting, early voting, or absentee voting. So it's a lot, people are paying attention, and this is the first year that we have local elections um, in November. So it's gonna be really interesting to see the turnout.
Okay, yeah, no, for sure, yeah, I'm definitely, I'm definitely curious to see, and by chance, you happen to know. How many residents are in Newport News, like a rough estimate? Cuz you said like fifty thousand, so I'm trying to like figure out like what the math on that would be, like what percentage?
It was fifteen thousand, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I just probably misheard you.
That's the good thing about this day and age.
I wanna say it's like, well, I can't remember, I looked something up before and it was like three hundred thousand, but I don't think it was this area, that's that seems like a lot for Newport News.
And that's why our districts actually changed because our population had grew.
Yeah, especially with all the, you know, the shipyard and the military bases, like Langley, Eustis, Norfolk even, you know, we got people living in Newport News.
That's right, so that's, for two thousand twenty-one, we had. One hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred eighty-seven residents in Newport News.
So almost a fourth of people in Newport News have already voted.
People are paying attention.
That's good, that's good, that's good, I mean, that's that's a step in the right direction, the people actually showing. Interest and and wanting to, you know, take control of of what happens in their community, because I feel like a lot of people. At least from my generation, at least I can speak to that, a lot of people just don't care, you know, cuz I mean, we're young, we're trying to make it in life, we're trying to. Figure out what our next job's gonna be or what we're gonna have for dinner next week, you know, so I mean, we're we're always in the the day to day monotony and we forget to look at. The important things that can maybe make that day to day a little bit easier, or or even better, you know, so.
Well, most people don't really pay attention until they're impacted. I was, didn't pay attention till my son was suspended, then I was like, oh no, y'all not fitting to do this to us, so then I started speaking up. So we just have to show people how they are impacted. I tell people in um, Hampton, you paying for taxes on a dog because your city council. So what city council puts in place affects us the following day, whereas a national narrative. Goes into effect two, three years after the fact, so we really have to play, pay attention to what's happening locally. Because it does affect us immediately.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, and then I I remember you mentioning, um, education is a big, uh, big, a big thing for you, so. Um, what what are we looking at as far as like how to change or evolve the educational system in Newport News to allow the children to get. The proper education they need, if they're not getting it, or the help that they need if they're not getting it.
I'm glad you asked, well, the first thing is making sure that our schools are fully funded. So that's the first thing, because we can't attract new teachers, um, good teachers if we're not paying them anywhere, we go, anything, we're gonna lose them to bigger districts. So we need to make sure that the pay is there, and then what I would love to see is more communities and schools. We have a young lady named Bridget Adams, and she brings some phenomenal programs to Newport News, we have my brother's keeper. David was a part of that, we have my sister's keeper, where it brings not the the A B students. Cuz you know, when you come to the schools with a program, they always wanna give you the star student, no, we don't wanna talk to them, we wanna talk to the one that smell like weed in the back. What's going on? So these are real programs that have an impact on the children, that have the things going on and 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 um, tra- that are traumatized. From things in our community. Um, we also, I attended a wonderful program, it's called Bloom Blossom and Flourish. And this is geared towards young ladies, elementary, middle and high school, it's just pouring love into them. So they were doing all kinds of TikTok dances and stuff and pizza, but it was exposing our children to a world bigger than them. And that's what we have to put in place, we have to show our children that the community's in the school. And that we're here to support you, not just in the school and work with your teacher, but we outside at the community centers. We're outside in in your apartment building, so if you have a problem, we're here, and that comes with funding the people that do the work. So I am not naive to think that I can do all this, it has to be a collaborative effort. That's why it's important for us to get on these boards and commissions, but in turn. The city of Newport News just released one point two million dollars to grassroots organizations in August. I want some accountability, it's beautiful that it went to people like Troy Cashmore, we know they're gonna do right by the money. Cuz they're already doing it with no money, he has a think tank, and this is a mentoring program that speaks to the character of a child, it changes the mindset. That's the kind type of programs that we have to be able to support in local government, because that's the one that has the hands on the shooters. We're not gonna get out there, I'm, oh, I remember, I'm, I'm there like, I was in really suck, I broke up a fight. Like three years ago in Really Circle with twenty-two young ladies, I was aching for like a week after that, and I was like, Lord. I can't do this no more, I gotta find somebody. We're getting old, and we have to be able to be those bridges that can say, okay, you're young, you have the energy, you have the program, what do you need? Do your very best at what you wanna give to your community.
Okay, yeah, no, that's that's amazing, um, okay, yeah, no, I feel like, I feel like we covered. Quite a bit, unless you have something that you wanna add emphasis to, or maybe something that we didn't touch on by chance?
We just, we have to get it right this election. Have to pay attention and don't waste your vote, take your vote seriously. Because we are at a crossroads where either we're gonna continue with the same surface level mediocre government that we've always got. Or we're gonna make sure that we really get changed, we stop complaining to people that can't do anything and actually. Hold some people accountable for what they are not doing.
Okay, absolutely, all right, well, uh, one, I wanna thank you for the opportunity and, you know, coming out and and wanting to. You know, get the platform a chance and and talk to me about what your uh, goals are for city council and for the city of Newport News. Uh, shouts out to David Wilson for also helping set this up with the alley-oop, you know what I'm saying, that's a, that's a good brother there, so make sure y'all support him too. And um, yeah, so for those who don't know where to find you at, can you let us know uh, how to find you, like as far as social media and things like that?
Absolutely, so my name Uganda Sample Jones on Facebook, I also have a Uganda Sample Jones for Council. On Facebook, I have an Instagram that's under my name, and I have a website that is Y samplejones dot org.
Okay, awesome, all right, well, if you have nothing else, I guess we'll wrap it up with that, so make sure y'all go ahead and go down to your local polls or. Is it polls or voting offices, on November eighth, and make sure you go ahead and cast a vote for uh, Yolanda Uganda Johnson. Don't put that on the ballot, it's not gonna, it's not gonna count.
Thank goodness there's no Johnson running.
So yeah, Uganda Sample Jones, make sure y'all go ahead and cast a vote for, cuz she's definitely promoting change in the city, she definitely cares about the city of Newport News, that's been. You know, made obviously apparent in the interview, and once again, thank you for the opportunity.
I thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Southside Junction out.